Good evening. I now call the Board of Education Regular Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, March 31st, 2025? The Board of Education Regular Meeting as set forth and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have one public hearing tonight for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. It's the Washington High School ADA Restroom Project. Board Secretary Steichen, have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearing on tonight's agenda?
We have not.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the Board this evening regarding the published hearing relating to Washington?
No, we do not.
The aforementioned public hearing is now closed. Board Secretary Steichen, have there been any requests to address the Board this evening?
Yes.
How many requests do we have?
We have four.
Okay, thank you. With four speakers this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Steichen will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you have submitted a request to address the Board and choose to refrain from speaking, in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between Board Directors and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language or outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This Board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the Board cannot address personnel and student matters. The Board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving those concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to state their names and addresses when called to the podium. Board Secretary Steichen, can you please call our first speaker?
Chris Rolvis, on the topic of staffing at high schools.
My name is Chris Rolvis and I live at 2027 Red Rock Drive Southwest. I want to thank the Board members for your dedication and service to our school district. Your commitment during these challenging times for public education is truly commendable. This is my 23rd year serving the Cedar Rapids Community School District. I currently teach Social Studies and Concurrent Enrollment Courses at Jefferson High School and serve as Social Studies Department Chair. Tonight, I want to express my concerns about the proposed right sizing of the Cedar Rapids Community School District staff. First, it is important to recognize that we are in this position due to the continued underfunding of public education in Iowa. Supplemental student aid provided by the Governor and the Legislature has failed to keep pace with rising costs and inflation. The fact that the Legislature has yet to set supplemental student aid for the 2025-2026 school year, something they were required to do in February, further illustrates this challenge. The right sizing of personnel in a district of this size is complex. The DM group was contracted for $450,000 to assist with this process. Before approving their recommendations, I urge the Board to engage closely with staff and the community. Our primary concern in our schools is the teacher-student ratio. Next year, our high schools will undergo the most significant curriculum shift in recent history. For the first time, all incoming ninth graders will be required to enroll in either World History, AP World History, or AP Human Geography. Additionally, all 10th grade students will also be required to take World History, effectively doubling the number of course sections needed. This pattern will continue in the 2026-2027 school year when US History transitions from the 11th to the 10th grade. Despite repeated concerns raised by staff and building administrators, no additional full-time teaching positions, or better known as FTE, have been allocated to accommodate the substantial increase in course sections. To illustrate the impact, Jefferson High School currently offers 92 sections of Social Studies courses. Next year, projections indicate a need for 105 sections. However, with registration for the 2025-2026 school year nearly complete, there is still no clear plan for staffing these additional sections. As teachers are stretched to cover required courses, juniors and seniors may face a reduction in available electives, potentially resulting in more study halls or early dismissals due to staffing shortages. Students have been registering for next year's courses with the expectation that their choices will be available. Many students take Social Studies electives, which often lead to AP or concurrent enrollment courses in later years. It would be a disservice to limit these opportunities due to staffing constraints. I am also concerned about the potential impact on Metro High School. The DM group previously stated their model would be based on student needs, and Metro provides crucial support for students who struggle in traditional settings. Any changes must be carefully considered to avoid unintended consequences that could push more students through the cracks. Additionally, I urge the Board to closely examine staffing at the Educational Leadership and Support Center. Since August, the district administration has hired multiple administrative positions, including three communication specialists, a solution strategist, a director of brand communication, an administrator to the Office of Superintendent, and an HR manager at a combined cost of $523,000. Along with the $450,000 spent on the DM group's consultation, nearly 1 million has been allocated outside the classroom. Staff and community members noticed these administrative hires and questioned their necessity compared to classroom teachers, paraeducators, and support staff. I hope that recent hires in non-student-facing positions will be balanced by reductions in other administrative roles at the ELSC. I would like to urge the Board to pay closer attention to staffing allocations and should direct Superintendent Grover to postpone administrative hires. You have a challenging role as Board members. As a teacher, I have been fortunate to work without excessive oversight from building or district administrators, and I believe that should not be your role as Board members either. However, I urge you to take a closer look at how our district is allocating its limited resources to ensure they are being used effectively. If this Board truly stands by the motto "Every learner, future-ready," then it is your responsibility, not that of the DM Consulting Group, to ensure our schools are staffed in a way that allows students to thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Kevin Darrow, on the changes to the district.
Hello. My name is Kevin Darrow, and I live at 4301 Topaz Avenue Northwest. I have a student in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and I'm a teacher in the district as well. I'd like to thank the Board for their time and service. Part of my job is I have to advise students on classes to take from anywhere from grade six into 11th grade. I say sixth to 11th grade because it's a holistic process. Decisions made at the high school level have a direct impact on the middle school sequence. Students need to, and really should, know their educational path once they reach middle school. This would mean that if a district was planning to, let's say, change the science requirements, that they would need to address this at the middle school level first and not last. When the decision was made to have all freshmen take biology next year and remove earth science from the curriculum, this had an impact on the middle schools but has yet to be addressed. Parents and staff are still waiting to hear what science classes the current seventh-grade students will be taking next year, even though the registration is already happening. It would also mean that if we planned on changing the math curriculum for, let's say, algebra, as we already did this year, there would be very important to include the middle schools first and not weeks into the school year, as occurred this year. This change in the math curriculum has been an extremely difficult transition for the teams of high school teachers, but they're doing an admirable job. They give up each one of their prep hours for 50 minutes each day to go over the new curriculum. While the curriculum is really good, there is not adequate time allocated for the dissemination of material. So what should have happened? Well, at Lynn Mar, students were introduced to the new math curriculum in middle school. This allowed time for students to learn the new system. While it was still difficult for the teachers to change, this slow rollout process was made less difficult due to students being familiar with the material and format. As Mr. Rol stated earlier, we have double the number of students taking biology and world history next year. This comes with no additional FTE. As we all should know, the only way to facilitate it is by allocating FTE from within those departments. There is no other way to do this. We cannot magically make FTE appear without specifically allocating more funds. We will lose electives. Despite this point being brought up over a year, over the last year, by staff and parents, this has not been addressed. In fact, the message from the district has been the opposite. We've been told that no electives will be lost, but once pathways and academies are up and running, we will again be allocating even more FTE to teach in those pathways, despite already being short in multiple core areas. What does this mean to a parent in the district? Well, it means that despite months of disjointed information coming out, despite multiple committees and dozens of surveys, we as parents still have no clue what the sequence for our students will be when they reach high school. This is not a communication issue, so before we hire more communication directors, this is a management issue. There will still be no answers to the basic questions that we have been asking for over a year. What science class will the current advanced seventh graders be taking next year? What preparations are being made to facilitate this transition to the new math curriculum? What advanced social studies classes will be taught to the ninth graders? As a teacher and a parent, I have the unique perspective to see this as a multifaceted issue, as do my colleagues. We have children in the district. We know the issues from an up-close perspective. So what are the teachers with children in the district doing? We're strongly considering removing our students from Cedar Rapids Community School District. Some have already open-rolled their children to other districts. To be clear, these are students who have spent their entire lives preparing to attend our schools and have been in the public school system with every intent to attend our schools. These are children of staff who had never even considered this. These are not hypotheticals. This is not hyperbole. Teachers bought houses in the districts they teach in in order to have the great privilege to have their students attend the schools that they teach, the schools that they believe in. They're now reconsidering. This has nothing to do with politics. This has everything to do with the lack of preparation. In the face of ambiguity from our district, our parents are considering alternative options. My daughter Chloe is sitting in the audience. I first brought her to school when she was four weeks old, and she sat next to me as I coached academic decathlon, and nearly every aspect of our lives have been entwined with the Jefferson community. I wanted her to attend Jefferson, as I did and as her grandparents did. It is an amazing school with fantastic programs, but a lack of direction and outsourcing of decisions have left many of us with no option but to turn to other places for our children. School Board members, please reconsider current direction. I implore the School Board members to please come to the high schools and speak to the teachers, many who are apprehensive to speak in a public format like this. This is the only way their voices will be heard. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cal Loan, regarding opposition to new Iowa bill.
Hi, my name is Cal Loan, from 3706 Spring Valley Place, Cedar Rapids. I want to thank the Board members for their time. It has recently come to my attention that the state of Iowa recently proposed a bill threatening the defunding of schools that refused to disband diversity-based clubs and activities, such as the Gay Straight Alliance, Mentors and Violence Protection, and the Black Student Union. I am the Vice President of Kennedy High School GSA, or Gay Straight Alliance, an instructor for Kennedy's MVP, and an attender of Kennedy BSU. The Cedar Rapids School District has worked tirelessly to create an inclusive and safe environment for students of all backgrounds and identities, and it confuses and frankly disgusts me that we would ever even consider reversing that hard work for nothing. Students have every right to be frightened right now because their own state is persecuting them. Trans students have been the constant subject of contempt by their schools, preventing them from participating in sports and activities. As of right now, Iowa schools are being investigated by Trump's Department of Education for the sin of having an all-gender restroom. Governor Reynolds signed a bill in February that strikes gender identity from the state civil rights law, as you know, making Iowa the first state to remove civil rights from a previously protected class. I was able to gather multiple statements from members of the BSU on this matter. Quote, "Eradicating these programs and the policies would provide educational roadblocks to students of color. Clubs like the BSU and DEI programs help us live and give structure to discuss our society, be ourselves, learn about our own history in our own classes, without simplifying or whitewashing history." Erasing the progress, I'm sorry. Erasing the progress our schools have made would not put only ours but every student's education at risk. Students face threats to their safety, but not for the first time. For most of this district's history, they have faced immense discrimination, not just from their own government but a bigoted school environment. And if you think you cannot do anything about this situation, that things might be better if we just waited out, know that the inclusive space we call our district now wasn't made by being quiet and waiting for a storm to pass. We fought hard for a safe place in our schools where students can feel welcome in their classrooms, have teachers and other students looking out for them, be able to talk in classrooms about their struggles, and educate themselves on other people's experiences and perspectives. The students before refused to be quiet. Instead, they were themselves loudly and publicly, and they won. And I believe those same tactics can be used again. Please oppose the upcoming bill. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker is Ashley Burns, on the topic of school vouchers.
Hi, public members of the Board. My name is Ashley Burns. My address is 317 13th Avenue, Hiawatha. And I'm here to speak as a graduate of private school education who is vehemently opposed to the school voucher bill. I took some time to just crunch some numbers, and not being someone who's very great at math, I did what I could. But I am appalled, and I wish that more people were telling this story. You know, in Cedar Rapids, we've got about 14,000 students, and the state of Iowa, 480,665 is what I looked up. Beginning next year with the no cap on any income for private school vouchers, we're looking at a $450 million annual cost starting next year. So over just a couple of year span, that's going to be a billion-dollar unchecked program, which the same standards are not held to our public school system. But taking that out, dividing it out, if all of that money were to come back to us in the district, we would have a $936.20 increase per year for each student. So then when you take that and you do all the math, we're looking at $13 million being redirected into the Cedar Rapids Community School District, which more than makes up the deficit that the Cedar Rapids School District has, right? So I know, with all due respect, I appreciate all of the commentary. I think we need to hear the stories from those in the district who are living out, you know, these issues with budget, all of that stuff. And I'm not here to talk about that, but on the larger scale, because I think it's one thing we should look at and hold our School Board accountable, we also need to look upward at our legislature. If we haven't in this room contacted Kim Reynolds and we haven't contacted our local legislators, we're not doing this correctly. We've always been told that we just don't have the money in our state budgets to fund public education, but this voucher program is showing us that that's always been a lie. And I crunched some numbers, again, from Xavier, and I just, instead of going through all the numbers, we're looking at a 21% increase approximately in tuition rates over the last five years. So that averages about to over 4% coming back for the SSAs. We are arguing right now in the legislature, without having a budget, 2% or 2.25% for public school students. It is incredible the things that we are asking our district to do on such limited funding. And, you know, this is political, because if we weren't in this situation, we would have more money to decide to do more things with. So with all due respect, this very much is a political conversation, and what is happening at the state level and the federal level is coming back and biting us in the butt. And that's just something that I think I'm standing here and I'm encouraging everyone to take a second to call your legislators, to call our federal offices. Let them know that public education matters, and this is our duty. How do we then, as a district, plan for long-term success? I mean, we're looking at, in FY '26, you know, just, I work at the library, so public institutions are under attack right now. So how does the district plan, knowing that these things are coming? And I would just encourage us all to really, like, look into that, just in general. Money has always been there, it's just a matter of prioritization, and that matters at the local level and statewide and nationally. So, thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers. We're going to start our evening today, tonight, with our student representative report by Malik Soger. So Malik, if you'd step up to the podium, we'd love to hear your report.
My name is Malik Soger, and I'm a junior at Kennedy High School. So this Friday, on March 28th, the Superintendent Cabinet for the Students participated in a meeting in which we discussed budgeting and staffing for the next year, as well as safety and security. During the discussion on bonds and staffing, we discussed the new backpack method for adding supplementary staff based on a school's need. This would be given to schools based on the number of students they have on free and reduced lunch, after which we split students into small groups and we discussed possible supplementary staff that could be hired or other ways to improve the safety of our schools. Ideas suggested were additional counselors for schools whose counselors may be currently overwhelmed, policies for reinstating students back into their home schools after behavioral problems, encouraging better relationship building between students and their counselors and teachers, more school drills for emergency scenarios, especially at new school city view and city view, more use of in-school suspension rather than out-of-school suspension, and standardizing student expectations for behavior and policies across the CRCSD. Outside of the cabinet meeting, many students have been worried about the effect of new DIEE policies and how the CRCSD will continue to support students in various minority groups. Many celebrations are also occurring at our schools, as many students are looking forward to dances such as prom, as well as graduation. Additionally, many students are having opportunities to learn about jazz, be at open-mic nights, and participate in fun runs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soger. We always appreciate hearing from students, so appreciate your report and look forward to more of those in the future. And now it's time to turn things over to Dr. Grover for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Garlock. I would like to also start my report tonight with student spotlight. We turn our attention to our students in regards to our students who are working towards our portrait of a graduate. To remind us of our portrait of a graduate, it is our role and responsibility to ensure that we are equipping our students for college and careers, that they're empowered for life and engaged within our community. So tonight, our spotlights of our students, they come from across the district, and I may have one or two in the audience with us tonight. So let's start with Tay Jackson, who is a fourth-grade student at Kenwood Leadership Academy. Tay was presented to us tonight because he exemplifies pride in both his school as well as his community. He leads with integrity, consistently demonstrating a strong sense of responsibility and fairness in all of his actions, always willing to go above and beyond. Tay selfishly helps others, whether it's offering guidance in class or lending a helping hand during group activities. He plays a key role in facilitating learning during team activities. Tay holds himself and his peers accountable to the seven habits. So let's give a congratulations to Tay from Kenwood Leadership Academy. If I call your name and you're here, you can please stand. Seifu J Ma is a sixth grader at Roosevelt Creative Quarter Business Academy. He exemplifies the qualities of a business leader and a future-ready scholar. He possesses strong communication skills, respect for his peers and adults alike, and takes courage to take chances in the classroom and confidence in his abilities. He has been, according to his principal, he has been a positive influence on his fellow sixth graders, his teachers, and he is a symbol of a visionary leader. So let's congratulate Seifu. And lastly, our third student spotlight comes to us from Kennedy High School, and I do believe Sarah is in the audience with us tonight. She and her mom both, thank you for presenting yourself here to the Board of Education. Sarah Martin Traynor exemplifies a portrait of a graduate. According to her school, Sarah is a 12th grader who is a one-of-a-kind with clear goals and a motivation and talent to reach them. But equally distinguishable is her commitment to kindness, empathy, and involvement in extracurricular activities such as dance team, academic decathlon, and the Cougar Bandana. One of her teachers summed it up best by saying, "Sarah is an outstanding student and human being. She cares deeply for others and has more empathy than any other teenager they've ever known." Yeah, that says a lot. Sarah works hard both at academics and in clubs and activities. She leads with a quiet confidence that her classmates and teachers respond so well to. Congratulations, Sarah. We're glad to have you in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Now we turn our attention to our strategic plan priority areas, and I will provide an update in key significant areas, like the first start with safe and secure learning. As we know, safe and secure learning has been a top priority for our school district. And recently, we were able to announce in response to our teachers, they have provided us quite a bit of feedback in regards to support for behaviors at the campus levels. In conjunction, we're working with the Office of Academics and our Student Services Department. This effort is being led by Rouse Parker and Janessa Carr, and where we are looking to place one SCBH position at each of our campuses. This will allow our engagement specialists, who currently work for us, and they've taken on many different roles, and they need the opportunity to focus their work on implementing and coaching Tier Two plans. Our counselors, as what was indicated by our student here tonight, of course, they have waiting lists, and they're also trying to do multiple roles to support students as well. And so by having this position, it would allow an opportunity for the lead to focus on Tier Three interventions. We will continue to work collaboratively with the campus principals to ensure that these positions are hired for and ready to serve their students for the upcoming school year. Next, I'd like to turn to priority area number two, our students prepare for life. Here, we'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge our Jefferson groundbreaking ceremony. I think the way Chad put it, where it was a great day for building and learning at the same time at Jefferson High School. As we know, we are embarking upon our preparation for our freshman academy, in which we want to say thank you to the Jefferson staff. They have been very cooperative. They have pushed forward, even decided that they want to go ahead with construction after spring break, and so we had the great opportunity. So thank you to our Board of Education members who were able to join us. We had city officials, as well as our staff members. We had city officials as well as our staff members, the leader, the principal, but more importantly, our students. Our students were there to take part in helping to shape their future. Our third priority area for tonight would focus in on our parents and teachers as partners in our work. We also had our teacher cabinet as well as our community cabinet hosted this past week and we kind of had some of the similar conversations that we had with our students focusing in on staffing as well as behavior supports. We did have Rouse Parker who was gracious enough to join us for both of these events and join into some, what I would say, very informative questions and our parents really seeking for some understanding but also offering some support and feedback. One of the top questions that we did receive was also kind of related to a comment we heard here tonight, was really talking about the return on investment. This was a question from the audience. I had a couple board members there, if anybody wants to weigh in. But the main question there was about the return on investment for using the district management group. And so when we think about the return on investment, it's like, what did we learn? What did we get out of this process? This will probably lead into my next update here too, as I talk about being physically responsible. Well, as we know, we were facing a $12 million deficit here within the Cedar Rapids Community School District for all the reasons that have been stated here tonight, whether it's the lack of state funding, coming off of a $51 million investment through ESSR dollars that we no longer have, and so many challenges facing our school district, not to mention enrollment. With that being said, we needed to go through a process, a very thoughtful process. And while this has certainly, it has been very complex, it is definitely causing us to think about things differently and it will be a shift for all parties involved from the top of this organization all the way to the classrooms. With that being said, by going through this process, we were able to identify $11 million of how we could shift our resources. That was important for us. So while we paid half a million dollars, that process led us to identifying $11 million in terms of how we could address our deficit. This is not a one-time process. When we were building out a model, we're looking for a sustainable model of where we could provide the very things that our community and our staff members have asked us for, as hard as it is. Number one, do we have a predictable model for hiring? Will we be able to be transparent and everyone understands how we hire and we place teachers within our organization? Do we have an equitable staffing formula? Can we say that we're providing the same level of resources across our buildings that would be addressing the number of students as well as taking a look at the needs of our students? And third, as we really think about some of the district priorities, we have a priority, especially around behavior, safe and secure learning, where our teachers have been basically begging us for additional support. We can have a priority, but if we don't have funding to put behind it, we will not be able to elevate that priority. So by going through this process, that is our return on investment, where we now have a model that we can use year after year. We are able to address our deficit, where we are preparing ourselves to have a balanced budget. This board and this district has worked for many years to maintain a fund balance where they can be sustainable and we will also have $2 million that we will be able to put forth for our organization to support behavior supports at the campus level. Yes, this did require 6% of a reduction of our workforce at our campus, but it also reduced 11% at the central office. So all of our staff members, they are important and everyone would definitely feel the shift. But throughout this process, I do want to say thank you to all of the principals that's been involved, all of the conversations, the very thoughtful process. And so now we are at that stage where we're committed to doing what we said at the beginning of this process, is really thinking about how we can take care of our people in the best way possible, even though we are facing this level of a deficit in one year here in our organization. By going through the attrition process, we are working closely with the outline, surplus guidelines that have already been in existence for all of our work groups. So thank you to the Human Resources Department along with CREA, where they have been working day and night, making individual calls to our teachers, making sure that they can offer them a position. And while we know it may or may not be the same position that they had last year, but we were committed to making sure that we can find a place. And so we will continue that process until we have exhausted all of our avenues. And so what's coming up next as we think about that? Our certified teaching staff, as I mentioned, they, the surplusing process, it is underway. As we think about our support staff, notifications of impacted staff, that they should be completed by the end of next week. And so you can see how complex it is. Paraprofessionals, notifications of impacted staff should be completed by the end of April. This is in guidelines with our normal timeline. And as we think about the ELSC staff here, notifications will go out to them this week. So while we've had many questions about the ELSC staff, again, that's 11% reduction here and it starts in my office. I would have been without staff all year and positions that would not be replaced and there would be several departments. But even when we are able to manage staff at the campus level as well as the ELSC, I just want to keep in mind what we've learned from our students, the kindness, the empathy, the care and concern. We will continue to execute in that manner and we're all on the same team. And I really do appreciate the call to action for us to continue to advocate for funding for and support for public education because this district has been very conservative, has taken many steps to honor their core values of supporting staff. And by going through this process, we will still be able to honor many of those values as we manage the transition. So speaking of managing the transition, a very complex organization that is certainly a time where we are needing all of us to become allies and support for a common mission, one being the bond proposal continues to be under discussion as we know that we are having to address our facilities where the average age of our buildings are almost 65 years old and where it has been 25 years since we have entered into a general obligation bond with the school district. So going throughout this process, our community has been very engaged. We sent out a survey and I like to think of it as more than a survey. It's an opportunity for us to invite all of our community members around the table. How else can you get everyone to have equal voice and to be able to give their input thousands of people at one time? And so that's exactly what has occurred here. They have provided us their input and we're still analyzing the input. We've also taken another step here this time around with the support of the Economic Alliance, a third party where they are able to go out and do their own independent studies. So we are kind of comparing notes at this particular time. And so it's time for us to review it and take heed to the direction and the information that our community is providing us. And we want to continue the discussions before we come back to the Board of Education. So here's just a short, brief outline for full transparency in terms of what we will be discussing and going over for the next month as it relates to the bond. So April 1st, that's tomorrow, I believe, we'll have our task force meeting and kudos to all those people who have been sticking with us throughout this process. We will have a meeting with them. We were also engaged with our Finance and Facilities Committee as well as we'll come back to the Board of Education on April the 7th to just have more discussions at the board level, some of what we're hearing. We will continue between April 7th and April 28th engaging in focus groups. We would like to be able to set up a meeting where we are inviting teachers in. We will put some dates out and so anyone is welcome to join. We're looking to have a teacher-focused group, a parent-focused group, as well as a community-focused group between April 7th and April 28th and with the intention of bringing forward some form of a recommendation to the board on April 28th. So how about with all these complexes, we know why we come to the Cedar Rapids Community School District every day and it remains despite the challenges. It's about our children, our students, and their future. So I'd like to conclude my report tonight with three quick celebrations and shouts outs. So let's go. Congratulations to Jefferson's academic decathlon team, 25 consecutive years. Give it up for Jefferson. State champions, state champions. Wow. Shout out to Kennedy students who completed the Leadership for Five Seasons class. If any of you know about that, you participated, you know that's something special as well. And finally, to the members of the Washington speech team on another championship banner and ringing the bell in the courtyard. Congratulations, Washington Warriors. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Do we have any other board reports?
I have a board report. I have to find my notes. So I am a member of the Superintendent's Core Committee for Policy and Compliance Oversight. So I'll give the report for the last two meetings. The first one, February 24th, that committee discussed recent developments concerning diversity, equity, inclusion at the state level, administrative and legislative, as well as the federal level. We have outside legal counsel present for that to provide general information about the executive orders and other communications from the federal government known as the Dear Colleague Letters. The committee also met March 25th and at that time, we heard updates regarding federal and state law and related authority with respect to immigration, DEI, and some of the flurry of activity around cell phones in classrooms. So the committee was presented with final edits to the Board Manual provisions on substance-free workplace, review of a provision on the School Improvement Advisory Committee, which is commonly referred to as CYAC, and recommendations for edits to a provision concerning the district's certified staff evaluation process. Finally, we received a follow-up report concerning efforts to ensure that district fundraising efforts are coordinated, basically with so many buildings in our district and everybody doing fundraising from PTA all the way up to, you know, high school booster clubs. We just want to make sure those are coordinated and that includes recommendations to revise the Board Manual provisions on the donations and fundraising.
Thank you. Any other board reports? I'd just like to make a quick comment regarding the executive order that came down from President Trump regarding the Department of Education. We've received some questions about that and the short answer is that there is a lot of uncertainty about what those changes will mean to us at the local level. Just know that we are watching and listening and we will keep you abreast of any changes that have an impact here on the district. Please know, as always, our main priority is keeping all of our students safe, keeping them secure, providing them with a safe learning environment. We will always do whatever we can to achieve that. So our commitment remains, no matter what happens at the federal or state level, to our students, to our teachers, and to our families in the community. Next up, we have Director Borcheting, who's going to give us the staff highlight for the evening.
Thank you. Tonight for our CRCSD staff highlight, the Board of Education would like to highlight Mr. Chuck Tenelli, science teacher and STEAM Academy Coordinator at Metro High School. He has been awarded the 2025 Iowa STEM Teacher Award recipient from the Southeast Iowa STEM Region. Mr. Tenelli encompasses Metro's vision, whatever it takes, to help build his framework for supporting kids from all backgrounds. With 100% of his students being identified as at risk of not completing high school, Chuck is truly dedicated to the mission of ensuring students have access to the skills and educational success they need to be future-ready. He was instrumental in creating Metro's STEAM Academy as a way to help students experience learning through project-based and immersed community opportunities. Chuck has fostered numerous partnerships with our community that not only provide a benefit to Metro students, but to our community partners as well. With this award sponsored by Google, Mr. Tenelli receives funds for his classroom and personal educational growth. Thank you, Chuck, for your dedication and commitment to CRCSD.
Congratulations to Chuck and thank you, Director Borcheting, for that. We have a special guest with us tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. DT McGee. He is here representing the Iowa Association of School Boards and I believe he's here for a very special purpose tonight.
Yes, I am. Thank you, President Garlock. Greetings, I'm DT McGee. I apologize for my voice, it's allergy season and so I'm definitely experiencing the joy of Iowa in March. I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director for the Iowa Association of School Boards to educate, support, and inspire public school boards in their pursuit of world-class education for all students in Iowa. This mission statement has been the guiding light for the Iowa Association of School Boards and it is with immense pride and gratitude that we recognize Jennifer Borcheting for her exceptional service on our Board of Directors since March of 2021. Jennifer, your dedication and unwavering commitment to our mission have truly been inspiring. Your insightful contributions and tireless efforts have played a significant role in advancing our goals and supporting school boards across the state. Your leadership has been instrumental in fostering a collaborative and forward-thinking environment and your passion for education has left a lasting impact on all of us at ISB. As you embark on your new journey as the Executive Director of the district, Czech Village and New Bohemia, did I get that right? Awesome. The ISB Board and staff want to extend our heartfelt thanks for your service and dedication. We are confident that you will bring the same level of enthusiasm and excellence to your new role and we wish you all the best in this exciting new chapter. We will miss you, though. Thank you, Jennifer, for everything you have done for the Iowa Association of School Boards. Good luck in your new role and we look forward to seeing the incredible things you will achieve.
I wasn't expecting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. And let's give Jennifer one more hand. Director Borcheting has been a strong advocate for our district with the Iowa Association of School Board, provided a lot of leadership and communication of concerns from us to the association. So we appreciate the work that you did, Director Borcheting. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items on which a director has a comment or question or requires that the item be pulled from the consent agenda for a separate vote?
I do have a question on number nine, the rightsizing for the Cedar Rapids Community staff. And this is just a comment. I had the opportunity on Friday to observe the process that CREA and HR are going through with our rightsizing. And to be quite honest, I was really overwhelmed. The process, the time that is being taken to look at every detail. So I spent some time with them and I know we have other work groups and it appears, well, it appears to me that CREA has a process in order and I want to make sure that other work groups have a process in order and maybe even talking with CREA, using some of those components. Because this is a process that, this is step by step. I mean, I went in there, there was a huge screen up and they were walking through each person individually, so looking at what is the best fit for our teacher. So I didn't understand the process, but walking into that room, I learned a lot, that time is being taken and care to make sure that we're getting it right. So I thank them, CREA and HR. This is a real process they are going through.
Yeah, I want to tag onto that. I have a few thoughts that I was writing down about the staffing process as well. So I just want to start by acknowledging that these, this is very emotional. It takes a toll on everyone involved, from the building leadership to district leadership to the teachers who are maybe being reassigned and everybody in the building who is connected to those people. And it all trickles down to some of the students too. You might be feeling uneasy during this process. We want to recognize that. And it's also taking a toll on our board members. We aren't robots, we are humans and we, these really hard decisions that we're making because our people make this district great. So please know that kind of to the public comment today, you know, we aren't entering into these situations lightly. We do want, don't want those unintended consequences, as you were referring to. And so we really appreciate you being here to share those things with us so we can just continue to do the role that we were placed here to do. We haven't had, if I recall, this type of reduction in over a decade. Actually, someone told me when Cindy was in the classroom, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I want to reiterate.
I loved it.
Yeah, yeah. That is a realignment, it is not a mass layoff. So really, as they alluded to, stabilizing all of our resources to meet our student needs and also being fiscally responsible. But it doesn't make it any easier because this is hard. So I also want to just reiterate a few things that, you know, I know our board is paying close attention to as we're working with the superintendent through this process. So in addition to some of the other comments that were being made, you know, I noted down that we are trying to, as Nancy was saying- that we are trying to, as Nancy was saying, find as many positions as possible. We want to keep and retain staff, right? We value our staff. We want to find a place for you, and that based on your certification and interest level. So communication is key, and that is being carried out. We also believe it's really important for individual schools to have autonomy as they align some of their staff with their school and needs to fit their culture. So that kind of leads me into the third point, is that we know every school is very unique. There is a unique culture of the school and sometimes a mindset of the school, and we don't want to lose that. And we know that this model is being put in place for a reason, because we are thinking about things being equal. Sometimes equal doesn't always mean equitable, right? So that's where we want to make sure that we are thinking through what this means to not lose what we have, because what we have is really special. And, you know, the most impactful thing in a student's career is the person in the front of the room teaching them, right? The teacher, the staff that are in the building every day, that are building those relationships with our students. And we have so many incredible teachers. So I just, as everybody in this room, there are teachers here. If you could just take a moment today, tomorrow, maybe a few times a day or every week, and just like thank teachers for their service, we need to be doing that more than ever. It's a really hard time to be in public education, as we had a brilliant and caring student join us today and talk about things that matter. We had another community member who was touching on some really important issues. But when we're talking about things like vouchers and charter schools and decreasing SSA year after year, you know, we need to remind ourselves that the fight is not with each other. We all are here because we care about public education. So thank you again to everybody that has been a part of this process. I know the staff has spent hours and hours, and it was really great to see just the districts, the school leaders and CREA enmeshed in this process and working together to make this, make this happen and move through this as a team. So just know that our board, our superintendent, all the leaders that I've mentioned, we are aligning our needs with who we are and where we're going. So thank you.
Could I say one more thing, too?
Sure, go ahead.
And when I talked about the various work groups, I don't think each one, I think we have to look at each one differently, and I hope there is a process in place that is, has been put in place.
I'd also like to comment on that. I feel like I'm going to be echoing a lot of what was already said. But I do think as a board, it is important to remember that our job is oversight of process to ensure that transparency and equity of stakeholder input is being considered. And along that matter, I would like to encourage staff to continue to provide feedback. While it is a process, it is a process of people. Please know that I understand there is a difference between theory and application. So I understand that what looks good on paper and what looks good in numbers maybe doesn't translate to the classroom. So what you're telling us and what we need to consider moving forward is really vital for us to understand so that we can be sure that we're enabling students and staff to be the most successful. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or discussion?
President Garlock.
Yeah, Director Newman.
Sorry. I wanted to thank our speakers tonight. This is, as Director Byers said, such an incredible process. And having been on the end of this process before in corporate settings versus the public education setting, I have been really impressed with how hard they have worked to make this impact be felt the least in the classroom. That doesn't mean it's not hard. That doesn't mean that you don't feel uncertainty. And I do want us as a district to address things like timelines for when you will find out about seventh grade advanced math and the teachers. Like, that's really important. We are just in the midst of making a lot of decisions right now, but we hear you, and I do ask that we provide a timeline for that sooner rather than later. But at the same time, I do want to thank our staff overall for their patience, for their diligence in finding every way that we can, that we can keep our classrooms and our schools whole and focused on every, every learner being future-ready.
I would just say, it is a hard process. It's trying times right now across the board for so many different reasons. And I do second that, teachers, we do hear you and that we do care. And just know that there is work going on behind the scenes that is not set up to be against you, but to help us as a whole, as a district. But never feel like your voices don't matter. What you feel absolutely matters, and thank you for being open and sharing that with us so that we can know what is happening among you. That's appreciated, so thank you.
I certainly don't want to be left out on such an important topic. Nobody's asking for less resources. I think that's loud and clear from everybody that we talk to. So I don't know if there's a building that any of us visited and said, no, we have too many people. It's certainly not the case. The other thing that I do want to comment on, because I know that this, when this board knew that decisions like this were coming and how difficult they were, I've definitely heard a lot from the community that the folks at the ELSC, folks that aren't necessarily in the classroom, making sure that those are also being looked at. So, Dr. Grover, I appreciate you commenting that that percentage currently is at 11% at the ELSC, 6% across the district. And I'm sure that there's plenty of people continuing to look for other ways to make the cuts that we need so that we can balance our budget and not impacting our kids any more than we possibly have to. I think we've heard it before, there's lots of people up here that are big on legislative advocacy. There are more people than just the folks in this room that we can be talking to, so I would certainly encourage us to do that, certainly in this state and at the federal level. So I don't think a lot of people understand why education is so expensive, and I think most of us absolutely do. There's lots of things that our schools that are doing, that our district is responsible for, that our teachers are doing for our community. So I definitely want to echo what I've heard from others say that you are seen, and this is probably one of the more difficult decisions that this board has had to make.
Thank you for all those comments. I would just add, I appreciate the cooperation that I've seen between HR and CREA. I think in a time like this, it really serves all of us well to know that we are working together as a team to get through this difficult time. I will reiterate what's already been said. There are many situations that we find ourselves in as a district that really were of no cause of our own. The budget situation that we're in, some of the other things that are coming down, we heard about DEI tonight. These are things that are put upon us, and we are doing the very best that we can, staying within the law and making sure that we stay within our budget as well. So I appreciate all of the comments that have been made tonight. I encourage you all to call your state legislator, call your congressperson, ask them to advocate for public schools. So any other comments or questions? I would like it to be known that on the consent agenda, I will be recusing myself on item Roman numeral 32. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I just want to...
That should have been a roll call vote.
Make a note that I have recused myself again on item Roman numeral number 32, so I have ayes on everything except Roman numeral 32, which is an abstention. Thank you. We have one item under administration tonight. The only item is for approval of the inspection waiver for building demolition. Any discussion?
I just want to comment, this is in regard to, just maybe a clarification, I think there's a question here. This is in regard to the Taki property. So what exactly is this beyond what we've already approved, I think, in our last meeting?
Liz, can you speak to that? Yes, can you come to the podium, please?
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Liz Jacoby. I am the compliance officer for the district and have been part of making sure that this contract is in compliance with all applicable laws. The item on tonight's agenda is a document that had to be signed in order to effectuate or carry out terms of the agreement that has already been approved. So there's no new action or consideration, but it is a document that says that we will not allow anyone to live in the residence that's on the property. And so it's something that requires signature and approval by district officials, and we wanted to bring it to the attention of the board.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, any additional questions?
It doesn't, it's part of the terms of the original agreement, I guess is the way to put it, and it's just a ministerial act to carry out those terms.
Okay. So there is no, we are not making any forward progress on a bond issue? We are simply honoring the contractual agreements to take care of the property?
That's correct. One of the terms being that we have to, we will eventually have to take down the structure, but in the meantime, we can't allow anyone to live in it. That's a DNR requirement.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All those in favor of approving the approval of the inspection waiver for building demolition, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have several items under board governance tonight. The first item is approval of a proposed settlement agreement. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those supporting the motion to approve, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Up next is a motion for a closed session to evaluate professional competency as provided by Iowa Code Section 21.51a. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Humble?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Timensky?
Aye.
Vice President Roundtree?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Aye. The board will now move into closed session. The time is 6:31. Thank you.